March 26, 2019, School Board Meeting to Order. Whether you are in attendance here or watching from another location, my colleagues and I are pleased you took the time to join us. We appreciate and applaud your commitment to partnering with us in support of our schools, our students, our staff, and our community. While the Board of Brevard Public Schools Staff Members... While the Board and Brevard Public Schools Staff Members are fully committed to doing our best to ensure excellence in Brevard Public Schools, we know that our success depends heavily on an engaged and committed community to work alongside us and help us to continually improve. Thank you for being active participants in the process. Pam, roll call please.
Mrs. Belford?
Present.
Mrs. Campbell?
Present.
Mrs. Deskovich?
Present.
Mrs. McDougall?
Present.
And Mr. Susan?
Present.
Matt Reed, Assistant Superintendent of Government and Community Relations, will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, I would like to offer my fellow Board members and Dr. Mullins the opportunity to recognize students, staff, or members of the community. Ms. McDougall, would you like to start us tonight?
Yes. Thank you. First, I want to give a shout out to the Brevard Schools Foundation for... at their supply zone where they had, for new teachers, a shopping day. And it was very successful. It was very exciting to see all the wonderful things they have. It was the first time I visited the supply zone, and thank you to Brevard Schools Foundation. And one way that you can support them is when it's time to renew your license plate. Get their nice graphic license plate. It's really very nice. And all the proceeds do support the Brevard School Foundation. I met over the break with the Central Brevard Retired Teachers Association. Great group of teachers. And I listened and got some good feedback from them. They're also going to try to support some of our schools that are doing some fundraising activities, and they also have scholarship opportunities too. I wanted... Speaking of fundraising, I want to speak about Cocoa High School Choir, who has the ability to go to Carnegie Hall in October. And they are going to start having a whole bunch of fundraisers, so please keep your eyes out for some of the fundraisers. It's very... I think it's a great opportunity for our students there in Cocoa. It will be... I can't wait to hear them, quite frankly. I think there's going to be some concerts that may even happen at the Cocoa Village Playhouse. I think. I'm not sure on that, but I think that's in the works. I also was able to go to the Kiwanis Club in Cocoa Beach, and they are having a fundraiser. It's a 5K held on Saturday, May 4th, and all the proceeds will go to supplies for schools in our area. So I have a flyer here if anybody is interested. I'm sure you can go to their website, which I can share with you later also. And lastly, one of the... What a great program. I went to the Brevard Zoo and met with the educational director there, and they have a zoo school. And what they do, you can... Our students can go for a week, six weeks, a field trip. I know the fifth graders have gone to field trips there. It's an amazing, amazing program. And I like what they do for our students and for our teachers. They really partner together. So my fellow Board members, if you haven't gone to see what they're doing there, it's really fabulous. So that's all I have at this moment in time.
Thank you, Ms. McDougall. Ms. Belford?
Thank you, Ms. Deskovich. Just a couple of quick ones. First, a happy birthday to Mr. Susan. His birthday was this past Saturday, so if you all would please wish him a happy birthday before we cut out tonight. Also, wanted to say a thank you to our legislators. I had the opportunity to spend spring break in Tallahassee, and we are in the heat of session, and things are moving very quickly. If you have seen the proposal of both the House and the Senate for budget for this year, they are working hard to do better to support education. Now, I will say, there is not a single person on this earth that I agree with on everything all the time. And so it's not perfect. We could always do better, and we could always do more. But I do think that they are working hard to give us the resources we need to support our schools at the local level. Certainly seeing some increases, some flexibility. Excited about the flexibility of the funding for our Safe Schools and our SROs to give us a little more leeway, some mental health support. And so we are appreciative of all of their efforts to bring that to us. And then my last thing for today is a huge thank you to our facilities team. I'm guessing Sue has gone home for the day, based on how she was feeling earlier. We had a phenomenal workshop earlier today. If you all did not have the opportunity to see any of that or hear any of that, you can see it online. But I was so incredibly excited. There's lots of tough decisions being made and things that we just don't have the solution to challenges about. But I am incredibly pleased to see that our facilities team is understanding and really embracing their role in education in general and the importance that they play in the success of the district, the success of our students and our teachers. And really, I was just incredibly impressed with the global perspective that they were taking in the work that they're doing in facilities. And they get lots of grief when our conditioning doesn't work and various other things happen in our school, but they are working super hard to make sure that they are supporting all of us. So if you happen to see our team, please give them a thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Belford. Mr. Susan?
Thank you, Ms. Deskovich. I wanted to say a couple of things. First thing is, I think that there was some sentiments said earlier today about how some of our family members are probably glad that we're back. I had a great time over spring break, had a lot of projects that we were doing, but I think it was time for us to get back to work as my kids were running everywhere and my wife was probably done with me working around the house. So had that moving, I had a special thanks and shout out to Tim Rooney. Over break, there was an issue that came up with the parents, and Tim took time out of his day to go to Viera High School and meet with them so that he could hit the background running on Monday morning. And I wanted to say thank you to that because there's a lot of people who, you know, we have that step up to the plate, and I had to say something nice about Tim for that. The jobs program that we have, that has now literally doubled. The sheriff has agreed to start the process of becoming one of the providers, so he's going to hire some of our kids next year. The other thing is the BRICS program, which is all of the trades programs of all the Associated Builders and Contractors and Home Builders and Contractors, has doubled the amount of kids that they're going to take this year. So the jobs program, not only last year, was bigger than any other in the state of Florida, it has now surpassed the entire rest of the state of Florida for participants into that jobs program. So that's phenomenal. And you talk about the zoo, they hired 20 kids over the summer through the program too. So it's amazing. I wanted to say a special thought, thanks to the Audit Committee. We met with them the other day in a joint workshop, and the work that they are doing to make sure that our half-penny cent sales tax and all of the other pieces to our entire budget that we have and processes flow very smoothly. And a lot of credit goes out to a lot of the committees that we have members sitting on that are not paid and volunteered. And you see the same people throughout the entire years, over and over again, doing the same thing. And so I wanted to say a special shout out to Art and the rest of his team there. I did want to say that one of the pieces of legislation, we have a lot of positive things. Astronauts thing is moving, so we may be getting a new welding program, and that's in positive towards leadership that I've spoken to. The other one that's a very positive one besides the revenue is the GED bill is moving. So that means for a lot of you out there that don't know, if a kid leaves our school system to get a GED to go to work, it hurts our graduation requirement. If they leave to go to homeschool, it doesn't. And if they leave the state, it doesn't. But if you go to get a GED, it does hurt us. So this bill would bring us in alignment with the other ones. So that's moving. I wanted to say thank you to Jeff Arnott. I saw him out there. Man, you're an animal with apprenticeships and trades up in Tallahassee. Senator Diaz's office reached out to me, and they said they were talking about some of the good things that we're doing here, and he mentioned you. So I wanted to say good job for whatever you're pounding away at up there because he said that you do phenomenal work and you're well-respected among the people that we're in. So I want to say thank you to that. They did want to let you guys know that Associated Builders and Contractors are going to come on board, and we're going to work on it, but they've actually offered to sponsor our construction and trades programs, which is the first one in the United States where a school district will have the Associated Builders and Contractors Trades Program sponsored by them through having all of the, you know, workers and firsthand and mentorship and jobs and apprenticeships and everything. It's going to be a phenomenal piece. And our team is flying out to NASA headquarters in... over in Houston, Texas, and they're going to be working on what may become our first manufacturing NASA center in one of our schools locally. So that's a pretty fun thing. And I did want to say, sorry, I have a list tomorrow. Robotics team. We have a phenomenal robotics team that won, and a special person that's normally here, Ms. Rook, usually works with the Pink Team, and she deserves a lot of credit, as do the Pink Team and our Melbourne team, because they are going to represent us, and they won the Central Florida. So to say that, I think this is the first time we've ever won. Sorry, am I taking all your lists? But they won for the first time, and we are now going to represent them. Now, we do need to do a good job. We may need to raise some money for them because it costs like $25,000, $30,000 to go to the nationals. And that is something that I think we might want to think about helping them out with Dr. Mullins. And then, no pressure. And then, last one. Space goes daily, and when they lease our property over here for the middle school, we receive $1,000 a day that they're out there for that fair. And our athletic programs in the local area receive a considerable amount of money off the sale of the beverages. So there is a... We received, I think, a check for $7,000 or $8,000. We'll receive another one for, I think, $10,000 or $11,000 in a couple of weeks. But the significant amount of money that we receive from this private business partnership with us, I think something that we may be able to look into a little bit further. But I did want to give them a shout out for the great partnership that we've had with them. That's it. Sorry, my list is long.
Thank you, Mr. Susan. Ms. Campbell?
I've got three quick things. One is, I'd like to recognize First Baptist Church of Melbourne for their new partnership with Riviera Elementary School. They're one of their new partners in education, and they have been doing a fantastic job. We have lots of churches that are partners in education, but they have... I was there about two or three weeks ago on a Saturday. They had over 100 volunteers who painted, cleaned, weeded, did just an amazing job. You should go to my Facebook page because there's pictures of somebody painting these motivational statements on the restroom doors for the kids' bathrooms, and everybody's really jealous of those bathroom stall doors. But what they're going to do is a continuing partnership. I also happened to walk into a meeting the next week where several of the teachers and administrators were there partnering with new volunteers. And they're going to have volunteers regularly in the classroom, and so I'm just so excited about that continued partnership for one of our... Well, it's probably closest to my house, but it's actually in your district. I want to... I went to Washington, DC, not on any official business, but just with my family. But while I was there, we got to visit Congressman Bill Posey's office, and we should be proud, Brevard, because there are two Brevard graduates working there in the office. One is Tom McCullough, who graduated from O'Gally in, I believe, 2013, and then Jake, whose name I'm still working on, who graduated from West Shore a few years before that. But they're doing a great job up there in Washington, DC, and so proud to see some BPS grads. And we started talking about, hey, do you know this teacher? And you know this teacher? And had some great connections. There is a student at Central Middle School who may or may not be related to me, who is doing her project, her RED project, which is one of the Eagle, the Gibson Intelligent Program. They have to do a project each year on our bus driver, our need for more bus drivers. And in her... They have to do service hours. And so in our research, we found out that there is not a consensus of a bus driver appreciation day. You know, we have Teacher Appreciation Week, and we have, you know, all kinds of appreciation days, but there's not. There's a National Transit Driver Day, and different states have their own days. But so we have declared, or she has declared, rather, and I wanted to share this so it could be beyond just a few schools that she's going to get to participate in. Next Tuesday, so I don't know, we need to have to make it official, but next Tuesday, April the 2nd, is going to be at least locally in West Melbourne, Bus Driver Appreciation Day. So we want to encourage as many people to get out and do something. She's going to be having posters, you know, just saying you rock and things like that, but just encouraging people to appreciate their bus drivers because it's a hard job and we need more of them, and they always need our appreciation. So April 2nd, get out there and if you honk, make sure they know it's a friendly honk, you know, that short tap-tap, not the long eh. So they know that you're appreciating that day. That's all I've got.
Why was it April 2nd?
Because that's the day we had available on the calendar.
Thank you, Ms. Campbell. I really appreciate the Bus Driver Appreciation Day. I know. Well, for years at Indy Atlantic, I'm not sure if they still do it, but when I was involved with the PTO, we always had one day a year for Bus Driver Appreciation Day. We tried to get them like snacks and drinks. And when I shadowed the bus driver, one of the schools has drinks for them every day in the teacher's lounge for when they stop in there. So we could probably do a lot more in this area to help. And I think the Bus Driver Appreciation Day I just put on my calendar, I'm on board. So anyone that wants to join us.
I will make it shareable this evening.
Thank you. Dr. Mullins?
Thank you, Ms. Deskovich. I wanted to share, I had part of our ongoing partnership with Eastern Florida State College, Michael Kador, Associate Provost at the Palm Bay Campus, along with Dr. Wayne Stein, who's the provost there. Post collaboration conversations periodically, just bringing us together to continue to move forward. I had met with Dr. Linda Medema, Vice President of Academics, some months ago, and we've been continuing to come together. But Eastern Florida has been interested in launching a teacher preparation undergraduate program. And they received some obstacles in their first attempt, but things look more favorable. They've made additional application. I've provided a letter of support and to absolutely champion alongside Eastern Florida. Dr. Medema and I are very excited, and at the sacrifice of overpromising, I said, let's work together to make this the premier teacher preparation program in the state of Florida. So very excited at the opportunity that may be coming in the near future. And so that's a partnership that just continues to excel. I'm very excited about that. I want to recognize Will Hensman. I don't see him out there. I don't think he's here. He is one of our senior buyers in our purchasing department for receiving the 2019 Buyer of the Year Award from the Central Florida Chapter of the National Institute of Governmental Procurement. There is only one buyer in the state of Florida recognized, or Central Florida, recognized annually, and our senior buyer, Mr. Henselman, was that award recipient. So he's... I know our senior cabinet in the back have all experienced his expertise and appreciated him, so I had to give him that shout out tonight. I also want to announce that we have two teachers that have been selected to receive the Physical Education Teacher of the Year Award from Shape Florida, and that is Ms. Tabitha Best, PE teacher at Manatee Elementary School, just down the road. And also Ms. Patricia Edwards, PE teacher at Heritage High School, have been selected as the teachers of their year for their respective grade levels for 2019. So awesome teachers, leading our kids through physical education learning. And also a shout out to... We had a student at Edgewood. I thought I saw Ms. Ingrata, our principal from Edgewood. Maybe not. Sky, I believe it's Nita, from Edgewood Junior/Senior High School, under the mentorship of Ms. Marissa Flint, the art teacher who nominated her, was announced as a Youth Art Scholarship Award recipient for 2019. So very proud of her for her hard work and appreciation to our teachers who continue to go above and beyond to support our kids in whatever their interests are. Along those same lines, I... You'll get the privilege of meeting some VIPs a little bit more closely in a few minutes, but a few of some true VIPs across our district that I get to meet with pretty regularly are here tonight are student leaders from our high schools across the district who are going to share some research, some information, and a cause they are passionate about that I know our Board is in full support of as well, and that is educating our community and particularly our youth on the dangers and the harm of vaping and the products that are out there that are really false advertised. And just so proud of them and the work that they've done and would look forward to traveling to Tallahassee with them next week, where they will present their position to our delegates up in Tallahassee, asking for more legislation around educating our community on the dangers of vaping. And last but not least, I have to share, I know the Board has seen a picture that I received from a young man from the Brevard Achievement Center. We were there a couple of weeks ago for a meeting and presented me with a personally sketched drawing of the Golden Gate Bridge. And Mr. Ben did this specifically for us in recognition of our theme of building bridges across the district. So thank you, Ben, and thank you, Brevard Achievement Center, for your great work to support our young adults across our district.
Thank you, Dr. Mullins. I just have a couple of brief ones. Mr. Barry Pritchard, he and Ms. Corey Hurst from Riviera Elementary School were in charge this year of the South Area Science Fair, and again, did an amazing job, I should say, art and science fair. Right, Ms. Campbell? Ms. Campbell and I were able to attend this year, and Mr. Pritchard is retiring, and he... Was it 36 years? 33 years he's been in charge of putting together, on his own time pretty much, the science fair for these children. And so we are extremely grateful for him and sorry to see him go. We're thankful to Ms. Hurst because she's going to be taking over in the future, and she's got some big shoes to fill. Next, I had my Deskovich Duty Day, which I was able to work in facilities. And in the morning, I was able to shadow Linda Connors, and she's been an employee of ours for 21... 29 and a half years. And when I asked her if she enjoys her job, she's about to retire, she said, "I love my job." And she said that she loves her job because she knows that if she can get the air conditioning to work or get the facilities to be in a better position, that it affects students and their learning. And I really appreciated the fact that she saw the connection in what she's doing in her job and what our mission is here at the district. So we want to wish her all the best. She may already... This was two weeks ago. I think she may even already be retired or is retiring this week. So thank you, Ms. Connors, for all of your service. Later in the afternoon, Mr. Steve Fletcher picked me up and drove me... Actually, Ms. Connors drove me to the Rockledge Maintenance Compound, and I was able to tour their facilities and learn more about how... And today, our facilities presentation, you know, kind of solidified what I saw with my own eyes. We have one painter for 104 facilities, one guy. We employ one painter. That alone should just show how lean we are and how hard our facilities team is working to keep up with everything. So when we're in our schools and we see the chipped doors from the paint jobs, we can have maybe a little bit more understanding that we've got one guy running around trying to paint as fast as he can. We have 18 people. Again, that was covered today. If you want to go back and watch our workshop today, but we have 18 people managing 104 facilities and their grass and their fields. We have 22 secondary schools. That's football fields. That's baseball fields. When you really divide up how much time they have, you know, we have overgrown grass a lot, especially in the rainy season. But with just 18 men and women trying to keep up with this, again, we need to understand, A, we're trying to run a lean ship, and B, just realize how much is on them. So let's just give them a shout out of thanks when they're working hard to get the grass cut, and we're irritated because it's getting too high. After that, Mr. Fletcher took me out to shadow several other people I was able to meet with and even use some of the equipment, which was kind of fun, some of the grasscutting equipment, and speak with our team that cuts grass and our forklift operators and our front-end loaders. And we have quite an impressive array of things that we do within this district. So I am grateful to facilities teams for Ms. Han, her presentation with her team today, and for all that they do for us. Does anyone have anything else they would like to add? Okay. Dr. Mullins, that brings us to the adoption of the agenda.
Ms. Deskovich and members of the Board, on this evening's agenda, we have administrative staff recommendations, three recognitions, one presentation, one resolution, 18 consent items, one action item, and three information items. You also have the yellow supplemental agenda, which are changes made to the agenda since being released to the public on Tuesday, May... March 19. Item A7 on administrative staff recommendations has been revised. A resolution on vaping and its dangers has been added.
What are the wishes of the Board?
Move to print.
Second.
Any discussion? Motion by Mr. Susan, second by Ms. Belford. Motion passes 5-0. Dr. Mullins, will you please let us know about the administrative staff recommendations?
There are five persons on this agenda item for the Board to consider.
What are the wishes of the Board?
Move to print.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Susan, second by Ms. Campbell. Is there any discussion? Motion passes 5-0. Dr. Mullins?
I'd like to take this opportunity to recognize some individuals who are present with us this evening. First, congratulations to Dr. Carol Green on her reclassification and transfer from the principal... Position of Principal at Cocoa Beach Junior/Senior High School to the position of Director of Professional Standards and Labor Relations. Congratulations, Dr. Green.
Well, it's really difficult to leave the family that I've developed at Cocoa Beach. It's really exciting to be able to come here and work with my new team and be able to support employees all across the district. And I'd like to thank my Assistant Principal for Curriculum, Kevin Ryan, for coming here this evening and the many phone calls and well wishes I got today. So I'm excited to work for you, and thank you very much.
Next, I'd like to recognize Mr. Robin Novelli on his reclassification and transfer from the position of Director of Secondary Leading and Learning to the position of Chief Operating Officer. Congratulations, Mr. Novelli.
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Mullins. Want to thank the members of my current team, Secondary Leading and Learning, that are surrounding me here tonight, other directors and resource teachers. A special thank you to Dr. Sullivan for her leadership. She's unable to be here tonight, but we certainly appreciate her. I also want to take a moment, if I can, to thank a gentleman over there on the far side, Mr. Kevin Thornton, who has been taking care of operations for the last several months. In Secondary Leading and Learning, we've had an opportunity on several events to work closely with Mr. Thornton, and I've learned that this is a man of integrity and good character and strong work ethic, and we appreciate all that he's done there. character and strong work ethic, and we appreciate all that he's done there and continues to do. I look forward to working more closely with Kevin in the near future. Dr. Mullins, like you, I started off in Brevard Public Schools as a teacher and later became a principal, and it is through those lenses that I continue to view our district. For me, it's always been about student learning. And so like Ms. Duskevich quoted Linda Connors the other day in saying, it's just so important for those of us that find ourselves afar removed from the classroom to realize that the way we do our job still has an impact on students and we make a difference for students. And so I'm excited to join a team that depends upon one another to complete their mission to support principals, to support teachers, and take care of our kids. So thank you for this opportunity to serve in this capacity.
I'd also like to congratulate Ms. Christine Rodriguez on her appointment as Director of Purchasing and Warehouse Services. Congratulations, Ms. Rodriguez.
Good evening, everyone. I want to take this opportunity to thank Dr. Mullins and the board for allowing me to serve in this capacity, this opportunity. I want to thank everyone who's supported me and encouraged me over the years. I'd also like to thank my husband and our three sons who support me day in and day out and are my motivation. So thank you again, and I'm so excited to be coming back home to Brevard Public Schools.
That moves us into the recognitions portion of our meeting. Dr. Mullins.
Item B8 is to acknowledge the programs and teachers recognized by the Florida Music Educators Association at the Annual State Clinic Conference held this past January in Tampa, Florida. Providing background information and presenting the awards this evening and our recipients is our music teacher, Ms. Cindy Johnson, or for Cindy Johnson, excuse me, is Director of Secondary Leading and Learning, Ms. Molly Bevan.
Thank you, Dr. Mullins. The High School Music Enrollment Award is granted to music programs demonstrating high enrollment in music courses. This award recognizes the effectiveness of programs that offer attractive music curricula as well as those that excel in the recruitment and retention of students. Students that meet this criteria will hold the award for three years. During this time, they may be asked to serve on the FMEA as a resource on the topics of programming, scheduling, recruitment, and retention of students. To qualify for the award, at least 30% of the entire high school student body, as reported at the time of the October FTE, must be enrolled in music courses. Since 1994, 21 of our secondary schools have received this award. Many of our schools have received it more than once and for a total of 81 awards presented to Brevard Public Schools since 1994. Our newest award recipient, Titusville High School, has 37% of its students enrolled in music classes. Titusville High School was one of only four high schools in the state of Florida recognized this year at the award ceremony. The principal of Titusville High School is Ms. Anita Jones. Her APs, Jennifer Gonzalez and Barbara Burgess, and the music teachers are Minnie Orr, Ian Schwinn, Jennifer Zahn, and Marcy Spur. And I'd like to invite Dr. Mullins and Ms. Duskevich to come down for a picture.
completed the requirements to be designated as suicide prevention schools. Ms. Melissa Katekas, Director of Student Support Services, will facilitate the recognition.
Thank you, Dr. Mullins, Ms. Duskevich, and members of the board, for allowing Student Services this opportunity to recognize two additional schools in Brevard that have met the requirements as defined by Florida statute to be designated as suicide prevention certified schools. To meet this certification, schools must have 100% of all instructional staff complete the two-hour online training ACT on Facts and the required follow-up activity and staff development training. ACT on Facts is the approved training for K-12 teachers and other instructional staff that will increase the awareness of risk and protective factors for students and delineate how school staff can assist students in identifying appropriate mental health services. At this time, we would like to recognize John F. Kennedy Middle School and Brevard Adult Education as suicide prevention certified schools and ask administrators and staff present this evening from these schools to come forward. Representing John F. Kennedy Middle School is Deborah Alderman, School Counselor. Representing Brevard Adult Education is Jeff Arnott, Director of Adult and Community Education for Brevard Public Schools, and Elaine Johnson, Learning Specialist.
Dr. Mullins, before you get started, I just want, does anybody in the board want to address either one of those acknowledgements? I just wanted to say thank you to the two schools publicly for working so hard and for the leadership working so hard to get them suicide prevention certified. That's no small task, getting 100% of your staff trained, holding the extra meetings, and I know, I can speak for the entire board, that we value this. I'm not sure how many schools we have now, is it like seven? Chris Moore, do you know? Eight?
We have 450 staff have taken the class outside of the three, four, five schools that are now certified. So hopefully, all of our schools will take advantage of this opportunity and start working towards this, or staff individually can all become certified. So thank you. Anybody else have anything they'd like to add? Ms. Belford?
I would just echo the appreciation. You know, we talk a lot about security in schools and we talk a lot about the challenges that we face in schools, and I feel like this is a critical step. Oftentimes, we look at, you know, hardening and having ASROs on campus and those types of things, but arming staff with the support to be able to both identify and provide direction or support for the mental health issues that we're seeing in our schools is a critical part of that as well. So thank you to all of those staff members that have taken the time to go through the certification. It really is incredibly important and we appreciate it.
Thank you, Ms. Belford.
I would just, again, echo my appreciation to our staff for committing to the extra effort as well, and I couldn't be more proud of the fact that almost 10% of our staff, our teachers, have committed to this just in the last year and a half. And that's just a demonstration of the caring and the concern that our team takes seriously for our kids every day.
Thank you, sir. Back to you.
So if you feel some exciting energy from the right of the room, it's because it comes from our SGA leadership, who I've been meeting with from across our 16 high schools to discuss current issues surrounding student schools, in addition to collaborating on ideas and sharing best practices that would serve to benefit all students across our district in a positive manner. One project that they have been working on is a legislative ask to present to our state legislators when we visit Tallahassee next week on April 4th. Tonight, four of those SGA representatives will present their legislative priority to you as our board. The students request to have it added to their legislative agenda, to our legislative topic, so that they can champion this issue when they meet with our legislators in Tallahassee. Our students presenting tonight are Liam Kreswick from Melbourne High School, Ashley Copeland from Edgewood Junior/Senior High School. You guys got to raise your hand. Liam, raise your hand. There he is. Ashley, there you go. They're mad at me now that I'm calling them. Cassie Ruiz from Space Coast Junior/Senior High School, and Sydney Acheson from Titusville High School. We certainly are pleased to have these amazing young men and women with us tonight and appreciate the work, the time, and the leadership that you have committed to as SGA presidents and peers across your schools. So now I'll turn the presentation over to our esteemed VIPs, SGA members.
Good evening, school board members and Dr. Mullins. My name is Liam Kreswick from Melbourne High School, and we represent a coalition of SGA presidents who meet throughout the school year with Dr. Mullins and members of his team to discuss and address current issues among our peers and within our schools. We appreciate this opportunity to present the legislative ask that was generated from these discussions in which we voiced our concerns about vaping in our schools and among our peers. We will be sharing these asks with our state legislatures during our trip to Tallahassee on April 4th. I would now like to provide some background on why this is an important topic to our group as well as to our peers in Brevard Public Schools. An article in the Florida Today dated October 26, 2018, referenced a 2017 study that stated that 12% of all high school students in the United States had vaped within 30 days of the survey, which represents 1.8 million ninth through 12th graders. According to the Florida Youth Tobacco Survey of 2018, 38% of our high school students have tried e-cigarettes. The number of students who regularly vape is 25% up from 16% just the year before. Launched in 2016, the company Juul now accounts for 70% of the e-cigarette market. Sales were expected to exceed $2.5 billion in 2018. 50% of Florida's youth are vaping nicotine, while 30% are vaping marijuana or hash oil. Over 8,000 flavors have been developed for vaping, with many of these being designed to attract our youth, including such flavors as cotton candy and gummy bears. The FDA has stated that some vaping products have been found to contain ingredients that can prove to be toxic while also leading to increased nicotine addiction among young people. This could then move them to try other tobacco products, such as conventional cigarettes. I would now like to introduce Ashley Copeland from Edgewood Junior/Senior High School, who will discuss some of the specifics from House Bill 7027. Ashley?
Thank you, Liam. I'd also like to add the following statistics that support how alarming this new epidemic is among our youth. The 2018 National Youth Tobacco Survey found that there was a 78% increase of vaping among high school students and a 48% increase among middle school students, just from 2017 to 2018 alone. That equates to an additional 1.5 million students vaping in a span of just one year. Juul has become increasingly popular with devices shaped as easily concealable USB flash drives, as well as being available in kid appealing flavors such as fruit and candy flavors. A typical Juul cartridge contains approximately the same amount of nicotine as a pack of 20 cigarettes. Almost 2/3 of the 15 to 24-year-olds who use Juul are actually unaware that it contains nicotine. In response to 2011 to 2018 National Youth Tobacco Survey, the U.S. Surgeon General had declared youth vaping an epidemic. Currently, Florida does not comprehensively regulate vaping in public places in the same manner as it does smoking. We're happy to discover that our legislators are already focusing their efforts towards the issue of vaping. While we think this is a good start, we believe it does not go far enough. The House Bill 7027 prohibits anyone under the age of 18 from vaping in, on, or within 1,000 feet of school property. The bill creates penalties for vaping-related violations consistent with the current penalties that are in place for smoking-related violation. The bill has an effective date of July 1st, 2019. Next, I would like to introduce Cassie Ruiz from Space Coast Junior/Senior High School, who will discuss our first two asks, which seek to require manufacturers to disclose their ingredients in all e-liquid packs, in addition to mandating that they contribute financially to anti-vaping educational campaigns.
Thank you. For our first ask, we are requesting that it become a requirement for manufacturers to disclose their ingredients in all e-liquid packs. According to House Bill 7027, even when vaping does not include tobacco, it still contains harmful substances such as nicotine, flavoring chemicals linked to lung disease, cancer-causing chemicals, and heavy metals such as nickel, tin, and lead. Research on vaping is still relatively new and the potential long-term health effects are not widely known by users or the public in general. Currently, there are no requirements for vaping companies to provide a list of ingredients on the packaging of their cartridges. Our first ask to our state legislators during our visit to Tallahassee will be to mandate that vaping companies such as Juul disclose the ingredients in all their e-liquids and cartridges. The public has the right to know what harmful ingredients are being included in these products, especially our youth who continue to try these products at an alarming rate. For our second ask, we are seeking the assistance of our state legislators to require vaping companies such as Juul to contribute financially to anti-vaping education campaigns through such organizations as Tobacco Free Florida, so that our youth can be informed of the hazards associated with vaping. House Bill 7027 will require public announcements in mass transportation terminals to include statements on the vaping prohibition. Additionally, we are seeking our state legislators to require vaping companies to contribute to this and other anti-smoking education campaigns, such as Tobacco Free Florida. Tobacco Free Florida's website already includes some information on e-cigarettes, including the fact that the adolescent brain is still developing and nicotine use during adolescence can affect a teen's susceptibility to addiction. We are asking for every school in Florida, public or private, to have a formal curriculum that is consistent throughout the state by Tobacco Free Florida. This even includes our elementary schools, so that students can begin to realize the harm these products can do, in addition to the legal ramifications that come into play if you are caught vaping or in possession of these products. Here to present our closing statement is Sydney Acheson from Titusville High School.
Good evening. Our mission began during a meeting in September with Dr. Mullins when Dr. Sullivan asked about vaping in our schools, and we realized as a collaborative group that this was an issue throughout our county. It was then that we began developing our focus on vaping for our visit to Tallahassee when we speak to our state legislators. Part of House Bill 7027 also includes the ability for Florida counties to adopt local ordinances that can impose regulations that are even more restrictive when it comes to vaping. The time is now, to protect our peers, that this has become an epidemic that has grown at an alarming rate over the last past couple of years among the youth of Florida. And just yesterday, legislation raising the minimum age from 18 to 21 for Floridians to possess tobacco or vaping products cleared a state senate committee, further showing commitment our state has in protecting our youth in this endeavor. We strongly feel that these two additional asks will go a long way and not only prevent the youth of our state to sustain from vaping, but to educate them, as well as their parents on the harmful effects of vaping that that can have on them. Just as a reminder, our two asks are to require manufacturers to disclose the ingredients in all e-liquid packs, and to require all vaping companies to contribute to the anti-vaping educational campaigns such as Tobacco Free Florida, so that our youth are better educated on the harmful effects on vaping. I wish to thank Dr. Mullins and the members of the school board for providing us with the platform to not only present this proposal to you, but to take time to hear our voices on this important subject. We appreciate your support and are looking forward to representing Brevard Public Schools and our peers during our trip to Tallahassee, Florida, on April 4th, and thank you.
If I may, if we can go to the proclamation, then if I can ask the board, would you... would you join our students after that for a picture just as a demonstration of solidarity and their leadership as they go to Tallahassee? But why don't we do the proclamation first?
Okay, so we... What are the wishes of the board on the proclamation? Well, we need Matt Reed to read the proclamation first. So, Dr. Mullins, will you please tell us about the resolution?
This resolution is an opportunity to support our students legislative ask concerning vaping and its dangers. Mr. Reed, will you please present the resolution?
This is a resolution in support of a legislative priority by Brevard student government leaders concerning vaping and its dangers. Whereas tobacco use among youth has risen quickly as vaping has become popular among students, and whereas vaping has caused a surge in student discipline cases in Brevard, and at the same time, more students are exposed to addiction and other potential long-term health consequences, and whereas Brevard Public Schools student government leaders, out of concern for their peers, have called for more education and restrictions on vaping in Florida, and whereas the Florida Legislature is complying with a new constitutional amendment by writing bills that would expand prohibitions on indoor smoking to also apply to vaping, and whereas BPS student government leaders support key provisions in that legislation, especially those that apply to school property, and they cover all forms of vaping and vaping substances, and whereas BPS student government leaders seek additional state actions, such as a public education campaign aimed at youth and disclosure of e-liquid ingredients. Please be it resolved that the school board of Brevard County support the legislative priority of its students and agree to share it in materials given to state lawmakers.
What are the wishes of the board?
Moved to approve.
Second.
Moved by Ms. Campbell, second by Mr. Susan. Please vote. Motion passes 5-0 if the entire board would join the students for a photo. We want to thank you all for putting that together and working so hard on it. We look forward to being in Tallahassee with you next week.
Madam Chair, if I may do one last shout-out.
Oh, God.
I know, but Mr. Maharris has helped facilitate this group, Assistant Director of Student Activities. Ms. Kimberly Garten is going to be one of our chaperones on the trip next week, our Resource Teacher for Social Studies. Of course, Mr. Reed helped to work with the students closely on the language of the legislation. And, you know, it wouldn't be possible for our kids to be here if it weren't for our Student Government Association sponsors back at our schools, who provide just phenomenal mentorship, leadership, and guidance to our students that help them rise up to be the future leaders of our community like we're seeing tonight. So my appreciation to all those. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Mullins. We'll now move on to the presentation portion of our meeting. Dr. Mullins?
With us this evening are representatives from OneBlood, who will be presenting scholarship money as a result of Brevard Public Schools' blood drives. I'm going to turn the presentation over to Ms. Beth Ann Juul, the Central Brevard Community Relations Coordinator. Ms. Juul?
Hi, everyone. Good evening. Thank you for having us. We're very excited to be here. You're lucky enough to have the dream team of blood donation coordinators for the whole county. We're all here. There's only three of us, so we like to call ourselves the Charlie's Angels of what we do, so...
I can see that.
And we're really excited. We have two fun things to tell you about, and Wendy is going to start with a brand-new program that we're going to be reaching out to our younger schools with. So she'll take a minute.
Thank you. We wanted to make everyone aware of a new program that OneBlood has just created. It's called the Pint-Sized Heroes Program, and it's especially for our elementary school students. Its presentation we usually do about two weeks before they have the blood drive, and it's a fun and interactive educational program for the kids. We start them out by talking about their favorite superheroes, and, you know, why do they like those superheroes, obviously saving lives? And that kind of lends itself right into the presentation itself. And while we know that elementary school students cannot donate blood, they can become pint-sized heroes by asking their parents or an adult to come in and donate for them. If you're interested in more information, we do have packets available, and it's got all of our information as well for contacting us. And we will also be reaching out to our elementary schools and seeing if we can partner with this new program.
Okay, so, we love our Brevard School District. Every single one of us spends time in every one of these high schools with our superhero donors. And they are fearless, and they get on the buses, and they save lives. Poor Bonita's a little worn out. She spent the day at Space Coast today, and the kids... It was a great day. And the kids are just amazing. And they are challenging, and they like to spend a little too much time with us, and they like to eat all the free pizza, and they like to get out of class. And we know, when we come into the schools, that it can be a bit of a crazy day. And we do everything we can to keep the administration happy and content, and our school nurses informed, because, you know, they may see a few later on in the day, and... But at the end of the day, they are completely, and I think the girls would agree, they're just amazing. And I personally can tell you, I was at Viera High School a couple weeks ago, and one of the reasons we love our job so much is I had one of the big football players who has a full ride to University of Richmond from Viera High say to me, he's like, "I'm afraid. I can't do it." And I'm like, "Oh, well, you don't have to, but it's okay, and it's safe, and we really take care of you." And he said, "Well, I'll tell you what. I'll do it, but you have to hold my hand." And the 300-pound kid, I'm like, "Sure." You know, so I got on the bus with him and sat there and chatted with him for the whole 30 minutes he was on there. And, you know, he was proud to be a superhero when he stepped off the bus. And I can tell you that we distribute more than 1 million blood products every year. We service 200 hospitals that need us to be able to get them the blood products they need for our trauma and cancer and all of our patients. We have 200 buses in the state. Here in the county, we take care of four buses, and the buses are out seven days a week. And at our high schools, we come in and obviously, and maybe some people know and some don't, we just don't ask for something. We give back $10 per student in scholarship money for every kid that steps on that bus. And for this last quarter, we are presenting the district with a check for $14,000 and $14,060. We had 1,406 donors step on the bus from all of our high schools last quarter. And for us, so you know the impact, that equates to 4,218 lives saved just from this school district alone. So we are beyond grateful. We're grateful to the schools, and we are so thankful we get to come, whether it's twice a year or three times a year. And I would like to say this building is very supportive. Dr. Mullins told me that he was going to be a superhero next time we were here, which is Thursday. However, he did say he was going to be in Tallahassee, so we're going to hold him to that in June. And we can't wait to get here and take pictures with him when he's being a superhero on the bus, so... But we thank you. We're so grateful. We hope the scholarship money goes to great use for all the kids that spend so much time helping us with these drives. That's it.
Which school gives more?
Bonita, actually, we do have it itemized, so we know. Our biggest school last, let's see, last quarter was Heritage High School. And then they were running, Bayside was running close. I know Merritt Island was second. Merritt Island was second. And I can tell you, even our smaller schools, you know, I personally take care of West Shore. You take care of Edgewood. I mean, even those for the student body, I mean, we get, you know, we know the smaller schools aren't going to be able to, you know, have as many students step on the bus, but they, for what they do, they're absolutely amazing, every single one of them. And they all work really hard. The volunteers are fantastic. Every school has kids that help us with this, and they just step up, and we... It's a lot of work. They are what they are, teenagers. We love them. We... Bonita, poor Bonita has to be there tomorrow at Cocoa High for theirs. After, well, after spending a whole day with high schoolers today, she gets to do it back-to-back, which, you know, they're... They require a lot of energy, we know.
I just want to say it's a great time. If I could choose between being in the office or being with the kids at the high schools, I'm choosing the high schools. They're so amazing, so full of love, and they just, they give back, and it's just pretty awesome. Today, we were at Space Coast, and we collected 59 donations today. So that's a lot of lives saved. And then tomorrow, Cocoa, we have 68 students signed up for the blood drive there. Some schools have us out four times a year. Some have us out two times a year. Each donation saves three lives. That's what it's all about, saving lives in our community and teaching the students leadership skills. And giving back to the schools is the least that we can do. You know, giving the kids the pizza, the cookies, the juice, the T-shirts, and the checks for scholarships or whatever the schools choose to use them for. That's what it's all about. We're all just working together to make a difference.
Do you bring a check every quarter?
Every quarter.
Okay, so we got another quarter to do this?
Yes, we have a whole bunch going on right now, so we'll be... We all actually have a whole bunch of the high schools were coming into the tail end of it. We only have one high school in the county that doesn't participate, and I am diligently working on them.
Which school is that? We are curious.
Yeah, you do.
Okay. Oh, Galley High School.
I actually was a teacher there and donated blood when I was a teacher there.
Well, if you can be charming and help us out.
Dr. Mullins, can we shine a little bit?
Even if it were one time a year, but we're working on it. They just have chosen not to, but, you know, we'd love to give those kids some scholarship money also.
What's the minimum age?
16 with parental consent, and if you're 17 and 18, you don't need any kind of consent. You just need your ID, so...
Thank you.
This is fantastic. Thank you so much. It's like the gift that keeps on giving. It comes back full circle. The kids get pizza. We get scholarship money. People's lives get saved. It's wonderful. Thank you so much. I think we're going to take a photo, Dr. Mullins?
Can I ask a quick question, Mustaskovich, before we do that? Well, you guys can move in that direction, I guess, but... So you might have sensed that we are a little bit competitive with each other. And so my...
We love that.
My question is, what happens if we, like, recruit community members to come when you're at our schools? Do those count for our school's numbers? And do those also get $10 donations per person?
At that drive, anyone that steps on the bus at those high school drives would count to help with the scholarship. Now, you guys have the safety, security issues. I mean, it's, I can tell you, we'd be thrilled as a company, the more, the better. We're actually, everything that got donated today will probably be transfused in two or three days into a patient. We're never overstocked. I mean, it's always a challenge. So the more, the merrier. I mean, even the faculty at a lot of these high schools, you know, the football coach at Viera gets on every time we're there, and they're, I mean, it'd be great, but it's really a school policy with how they feel about having...
We get bonus points?
I got that under control.
With community members?
Well, you get juice and cookies, and we always give great gifts, so everyone gets a gift for donating and free pizza, so...
I have a question. So if someone happened to have negative blood, do we get triple...
Yes, you're our favorite kind of superhero.
Do we get triple points for showing up for that?
You're our favorite kind of superhero.
No, it's me, weirdo. Okay.
You're the universal donor. Anyone can get your blood, and yes, that's one of our favorite all-time types, so...
So I get three points for that?
Yes, but don't give our company your phone number, because when we're really desperate for you, we're going to call you all the time because we're going to need you. Starting to be...
All right, I think we're coming down now for photo.
Okay, but who has got more high schools? Because then there's... Well, and it really comes down to, if you look at the two schools generally, they're our bigger schools. Know what I mean? So...
So I'm going to go let the kids know they get out of school for free and get pizza. It's done, do you want to place me?
We would like a schedule of your next... Okay, can you email that to all the board members, please?
Seriously, can you email the schedule?
So will we all of you either Thursday or... If anybody wants to come to Cocoa High School tomorrow, you're all welcome to come and join us there. I think you all should come to Cocoa High School, so we can get more. That's my high school.
That's right, that's my high school.
Okay, moves us on to public comment section of our meeting. Though school board policy 0169.1 limits to 30 minutes, the portion of the meeting during which the public is invited to participate and provide public comment, the policy further provides that this time limit may be extended by a vote of the board. We have four speakers signed up this evening. Each speaker is limited to three minutes. We have a clock in front of me to help you keep track of your time. When your time is over, you'll be asked to stop and allow the next speaker his or her turn. Always keep in mind that reasonable decorum is expected at all times, and your statement should be directed to the board chairman. The chairman may interrupt. Warner terminate a participant's statement when time is up, personally directed, abusive, obscene, or irrelevant. Should an individual not observe proper etiquette, the chairman may request the individual leave the meeting. Let's all encourage an environment appropriate for our children who may be present or who are watching at home. Let's begin with our first three speakers. Before speaking, please state your name, the organization you represent, and identify the topic that you will be discussing. I'm just going to actually list all four speakers, since there's only four. We have Anthony Calucci, Vanessa Skipper, Ronald Bradley, and Elaine Kirk. You can come forward in that order, please.
Anthony's first, Ron.
Mr. Bradley, Anthony Calucci is first.
Yes. I'm Ron Bradley. I live in Rockleigh, Florida, at 110 Orange Avenue.
Thank you, Ron.
I want to congratulate all you people on the school board. I know it's been a rough year, and I know you got to go to, to get it. The reason why I'm here is because I, I'm not blaming you for a lot of things that happened in the past. I think of some bad judgments that have been made on previous administration. But at the same time, I see some things that I don't think is really right. We've got a lot of vehicles around them that I think are brand-new vehicles that we don't need. We've got students that can repair them. And also, the biggest problem is air conditioning. I'm retired from air conditioning. I worked for a company that started in 1972 in Orlando. I started, worked for them in 1980, 2008. Their estimated income was $40 million. I was number 12 when I started working for the company in 1980. 2008, they sold out to a company. Now, if they come from 1972 to 1980, and their income was $80 million, now they've got 350 employees. So I think I'm kind of knowing what I'm talking about with the air conditioning problems. Air conditioning is one of the biggest expenses that you can have in a school system. You've got to do maintenance on the systems. It'll eat your lunch if you don't. Now, you can't maintain the amount of equipment you've got. So I understand you've got four people in the air conditioning department. That doesn't work. I would be glad to talk to anybody that would want to listen to me about some problems that you've got. If I can't answer them, I know some people that can answer the question to help get your project going in a more efficient way. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Bradley. We appreciate your, your offer of help and the time you take to come and speak to us. Next, Anthony Calucci.
My name is Anthony Calucci, president of the best local union in the country. I'm pleased with the progress that was made at the bargaining table two weeks ago. However, it is absolutely absurd that it took this long and this much effort for honest and fair negotiations to occur. Negotiations should have been like this the entire year. The new leadership on your team was outstanding, and I hope we continue to make progress tomorrow. I need you to remember, though, that for nearly two years of us pointing out and discussing the incompetence of the former leadership in the HR department, you flat-out ignored us to the point that you did serious damage to the relationship between you and the teachers. I know I talked to all of you about the problems at the table and with the HR department in general. I know it wasn't just me. I know it was principals that were telling you the same thing. And low and behold, as soon as changes were made, and they were not made because of you, those problems left voluntarily. It was glaring how much better things are. The lesson for all of you to learn is when this union is telling you that there's a problem, you shouldn't bury your head in the sand and tell us you can't do anything about it. For the sake of this school district, you need to address it. When we're telling you that we have three or four problematic principals out of all our administrators, apply the lesson you just learned. Instead of protecting the wrong people, instead of being defensive, remember, we told you about problems previously, and when a change was made, there was evident improvement. Now, once again, I'm telling you that your salary offer is a problem. It's unacceptable that Florida ranks 46 in the nation in average teacher pay, and Brevard County is $1,103 behind the state average. Fact! Brevard County teachers are amongst the worst-paid teachers in the nation. Your offer this year is amongst the worst in the state of Florida. And, and at this point in the school year, don't even think about telling us you can't give us a competitive increase. You have the money to cover this year. You're in the process of creating the budget for next year. It ain't rocket science from here. Cut the budget next year to pay for the raises. And let's be clear, chair and vice chair, you were responsible for not asking the voters to help fund teacher pay when the previous superintendent recommended doing so. Instead, you said you would find the money for competitive salaries in the budget. Well, it's time you put our money where your mouth is. It's time to send these teachers home with a real raise in their paycheck. Don't you see that a real raise is an investment in this district? It's the way to insulate this district from the anticipated 10,000 instructional vacancies next year. Dozens of teachers have participated in the silent strike this year and have walked away because of pay. We love what we do, but money matters. You've had all year to figure it out. Your time is up. We demand a competitive raise.
Thank you, Mr. Calucci. Miss Skipper.
Good evening, Vanessa Skipper, Vice President of the Brevard Federation of Teachers. I will be at Cocoa High School tomorrow, giving blood, as I always did as a teacher and started as a student at Merritt Island High School. Over spring break, I spent a couple days in Tallahassee, speaking with legislators about the needs of education in Brevard and around the state. I also took the opportunity to sign up for public comment to speak before the State Board of Education. They limited speakers to two minutes, so when I finished with my time, I thanked the commissioner and the board, and I started to step away from the podium. And then something happened that I wasn't expecting. They called me back to the podium, thanked me for speaking, and asked me if they could ask some questions. Now, y'all know I didn't turn that down. But after that experience, it gave me some time to reflect on the last six years. I began signing up for public comment to speak before the school board back in 2013. Not once have I ever been thanked personally for my commitment to speaking before the board, and not once have I been asked follow-up questions to my comments. In fact, it's rare that I even receive communication from a board member if I haven't first initiated the communication. Thank you to the couple of you who are changing that rarity. I hope to see it continue from everyone. I said this the last time I was up here, and I'll say it again. Y'all are the checks and balances for the Brevard Public Schools. There is a difference between being able to trust the people who work for you and blind faith. If someone is offended because you asked a question and you didn't trust them, there's your sign. If someone is offended because you didn't follow the bureaucratic chain of command, there's your sign. When I spoke before the Board of Education last Tuesday, one of the things they asked me was for suggestions of other things they could do to make teachers' day-to-day experiences easier. Obviously, I mentioned funding, salary, more autonomy, and a different definition of accountability. But seriously, why is it so hard? Yes, we need more funding from Tallahassee, but you have to know that every legislator I sat in front of pointed their fingers squarely back at you. Do I think that's completely fair? No, I don't. But do I think that you guys could do more? Yes, I do. While I don't agree with them totally, you can do better with the salary offer. While you're celebrating and giving your CFO plaques for money management, other districts are finding ways to give teachers, teachers better raises while still being fiscally responsible. While your CFO is giving raises to her employees behind your back and denying teachers a competitive raise, other districts are doing what they can to make it work. It's quite flabbergasting to me and to my colleagues. Here's a story. Public education is underfunded. Teachers in Florida dropped from 45th to 46th in the nation for salary, but that doesn't have to be your story. What are you doing to fix this? Own the story, and you get to write the ending. Deny the story, and it owns you. You have the opportunity to write the story here in Brevard County. Please do so.
Good evening. My name is Elaine Kirk. I'm a parent of three children who attend Lockmar Elementary, and I'm currently serving as the PTA president at their school. And I feel like I'm on every committee possible to stay informed on the events and policies that impact my children. This year has been an especially trying year for my children. My fourth grader started in an overcrowded class, was in a correctly crowded class, when a substitute was brought in, but will end the school year in an overcrowded class because a substitute who was trying to complete her cert, teaching certification was moved to sixth grade because there was a teacher shortage there as well. My second grader started in a class with a wonderful teacher. She ended up with health complications beyond her control that took her out of the classroom for almost three months. During that time, my daughter had five substitutes. My kindergartner started in a class with a teacher who had been on leave unpredictably for almost three years. In October, she injured herself and went on leave again. The first grading period ended with another handful of substitutes, until an amazing uncertified substitute took pity on these poor kindergarteners and has become the permanent replacement. During those five months, this, this substitute was unable to be hired on permanently, even after she received her certification, because his original teacher kept extending her leave. Although the substitute will have taught him for most of the school year, she will have earned only substitute pay as an individual with a master's degree because of some ridiculous policy that the county has. The fact of the matter is, is that there's a teacher shortage in the county, but you, one might ask, why wouldn't there be? Who wants to work a job with minimal pay, minimal benefits, and minimal appreciation? As a parent, I have a great deal invested in my children's futures. I want them to be caring, contributing, independent members of society who know many things about many things, because they had excellent teachers and caring parents working together to look out for their futures. So my questions to you this evening are: What is your plan to retain excellent teachers? What is your plan to recruit excellent teachers? What is your plan to get qualified substitute teachers when even a job at a fast-food restaurant can compete with substitute pay? How do you expect to maintain this A status that you are so proud of if you have teachers who don't want to work for you because you don't pay them enough? And really, the question that really confuses me most is, what do you even have against paying teachers a reasonable salary that does not require them to get second and third jobs when they're educating the future of our country? What do you have against investing in our future healthcare providers, our future innovators, and the future educators of your posterity? I can't be here at every rally. I have a husband, I have three children, but please do not take this as an indication that I do not support the teachers of this county. Thank you.
Would any board member like to comment? We wish to thank this evening's speakers. Your willingness to speak to the board is appreciated. This moves us to the consent agenda. Dr. Mullins.
There are 18 agenda items under this category, one with prior information.
Thank you, Dr. Mullins. Does any board member wish to pull any of these items? I'll entertain a motion to accept the consent items.
Move to approve.
Second. Moved by Mr. Susan, second by Ms. McDougall. Any discussion? Motion passes 5-0. We'll move on to the action agenda.
Ms. Staskovic, there is one item under this category this evening, item G32 on purchasing solicitations.
What are the wishes of the board?
Move to approve.
Second. Motion by Mr. Susan, second by Ms. Belford. Any discussion? Motion passes 5-0. We will move on to the information agenda, which includes items for board review, and will be brought back for action at a later meeting. No action will be taken on these items tonight, Dr. Mullins.
There are three items under the information category.
Does any member wish to discuss any of the information items? Ms. Belford.
I actually just have a question for Ms. Enval on the, so we have three policies coming forward for information items, and I know that we have provided public opportunity for comment on those in our work sessions.
Yes.
But on here, on the write-up, it says that it's coming back to us on the ninth to the school board meeting under the consent agenda? Do we not have to have a public hearing on that?
No, that's not correct. It needs to come back on action item.
Okay.
Because we need to have another public hearing, as well as, then the school board can vote one way or the other on the poll.
Okay, that's, that's what I thought. So do we then, the, the recommendation, if you're looking at it, the recommendation is a sentence followed by a colon, and then the dates are listed below. Do we need to modify the motion to approve the recommendation with the 4-9 date being on the action agenda?
Consent agenda, right. So is this just, this is just on for information?
It's just information tonight.
Right, so the recommendation should not, there should not be a recommendation on there?
Okay.
Because it is just for information.
Okay.
So I think we can have the record reflect that there should not be a recommendation, because the board's not acting on that particular item tonight, and I have to look at the other two to see if they have the same language on them.
It doesn't really give a recommendation under the recommendation. It doesn't say approve.
Right.
It just, it just kind of, it's kind of more information than it is recommendation.
The 2510 has different language a little bit, and it doesn't say on consent.
So it sounds like is, with it being on information, we just need to be aware of that for the next meeting, so we edit appropriately.
And 2520 also does not indicate that it's on consent. It's just for 2461. And you're correct, it won't be on consent. It actually is, that's going to be the public's second opportunity to provide comment.
Thank you.
Okay, we are now at board member reports. Does anyone have a board report to give?
I don't have one.
Ms. McDougall.
I don't know if this is the right place. I never do that. But I, I have something that I wanted to, because in one of our emails, there was a group who said that they needed a liaison to a committee. It was the Health Advisory Committee.
I don't remember seeing that.
But if no one has a burning desire to be that liaison, I will be glad to do that liaison.
Does anyone know what group this is? We need a Health Advisory Committee liaison for.
That is under Ms. Moore's area in Student Services, and she can provide more information if you would like.
Can you come up here, please, so we can?
Yes. I'm wearing sneakers, because I'm downstairs with buses.
It's okay. We won't look at your shoes.
At work, or workers' comp claim?
That's actually led up by Rachel Winston out of Leading and Learning. It's a cooperation between both divisions, Leading and Learning and Student Services. It's the School Health Advisory Committee, and it is a statutory requirement that we have a school board member that participates as part of that committee.
Do we help form the Health Handbook? It's not the right name. What is, what is the role? No, there's, we have a handbook on health, right? On physical...
The Wellness Plan.
Wellness. We have a wellness.
Yes.
That's what I'm talking about.
Yeah, that, that group does a, a lot of things, but one of the things that they do is do surveys and compile all of the health activities of the district into, into that form to submit to the state.
So the role of the school board liaison in that, do you know?
I, I don't, I don't know specifically. I imagine as an advisor and, and a participant.
Okay. Thank you. Sure. So Ms. McDougall?
If no one else...
I don't think anyone over here is going to beat you for it.
I would be more than willing to be the liaison.
I think it's yours. Anybody have any objections to Ms. McDougall being the health liaison? It's all yours. And by the way, this is a perfect time to bring that up. You, you said you didn't know if this was a good time in the meeting to bring something like that up. You got it. This is the time. Does anyone have any other board reports? Dr. Mullins, do you have any report?
No, ma'am.
Okay, then there being no further business. Meeting's adjourned.
All right.